Thirty-one, New York State. Code of Rules and Regulation. We're going to ask that each person only speak once unless we don't have an overage of people, which we don't seem to be doing too bad. So I don't think we need to put a time limit on it unless anybody's going to talk till tomorrow in filibuster. The meeting's open. Who would like to start? Iris. And then what I would do is I'd just ask you to come up to the table. That way, it will be, this is a microphone that will allow the Zoom participants to hear you.
A minute and forty-two seconds.
It could be less or more. I think you'll be fine.
And how do they estimate their time?
Hemp and cannabis are not our enemy. They have helped millions of people in many ways for many hundreds of years all around the world. As an educator for thirty-one years with the New York City Department of Education, it is incumbent upon me to point out the following. Education brings us into the light with clarity, transparency, and positive growth. However, fear and misinformation keep us in darkness with stagnation and the inability to move forward in a positive direction to help ourselves, our neighbors, and our community. We are on the cusp of being able to do something wonderful for our farmers, for our economy, for jobs, for Tustin, and for Sullivan County. We need to do the right thing, and the right thing is to opt in right now while we can. Opting out is denying Tustin the 3% in tax revenue and giving that money to another town when Tustin could certainly use that sizable amount of money. It will help our own community and pay for some of the upcoming town projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris. Yes, Brandy.
Hello.
Hi, Brandy.
This is what I learned at the Catskill Cannabis Consortium on Sunday at the union with six experts in the field.
Please speak louder.
Speak louder.
Please, yes.
Cannabis is a plant, a weed. Two varieties of the plant, marijuana and hemp. There's 25,000 uses for industrial hemp, such as paper, rope, clothes, mulch, et cetera. The U.S. Constitution was written upon hemp. However, marijuana's been demonized since 1936 when a propaganda film named Free for Madness was released. But marijuana does have medical qualities, and it's been used for thousands of years. Today, more than 200 illnesses like Parkinson's, cancer, meningitis, diabetes, pain management, and more are treated with medical marijuana. Cannabis is now legal for recreation adult use, 21 years or older in New York State. I'd like you all to vote with facts and not fear as well, and to choose to remain opted in to the New York State Marijuana Law, which allows all towns in the state to have adult-use cannabis retail dispensaries and/or onsite consumption venues. The New York State law will require all products to be tested in labs and emphasizes consumer safety and product transparency. Dangerous pesticides are often found on illegal marijuana because there's been no oversight up to now. The new law requires testing from product, I'm sorry, testing the product from lab to label, protecting the health of the consumer. Three hundred and twenty-one thousand jobs have been created so far in the legalized cannabis industry in 38 states, building local economies. Distressed farmers who want to grow are eligible for matching rural resources from the state or the option of connecting with financial partners looking to back farming ventures. New York State is poised to make $3 billion a year from the cannabis industry. The profits from adult-use marijuana sales in New York State will be 9% to go to the state, which goes to the police and community programs. 3% go to the municipalities in which the dispensaries and/or onsite consumption venues are located. That would be 3% would go all to Tustin if located here. 1% goes to the county in which the dispensaries and consumption are located as well. Tonight, the Tustin Town Board can facilitate this financial opportunity for Tustin. Socrates Police Chief Sinagra was interviewed for the consortium, and he has accepted the new law, has been working with his community to ensure safety. He has played an important role in guiding local dispensaries. The Journal of the American Medical Association has studied marijuana use in teens in newly-legalized states and has found no increase in teen usage. In 2015, the Drug Enforcement Administration renounced the gateway theory, saying that there was no statistical proof of marijuana being a gateway drug. Legal cannabis in the Catskills will grow the state's economy. Why not consider the ends of this prohibition as a way to grow Tustin's economy in secure, professional, regulated dispensaries? If any of you were living when the alcohol prohibition was lifted, would you have voted to ban liquor stores and bars? Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Brandy. Start.
I also encourage people to view the presentation that was put on at the Narrowsburg Union on Saturday because it was absolutely phenomenal, and it dispelled so many myths about this marijuana madness, quote-unquote. It's not marijuana madness, it's marijuana resurrection. This is going to be able to bring back Sullivan County agriculture to be a forerunner in the nation for this production instead of being known as the headquarters for the Gourmand's Delight foie gras. The police chief of the Socrates, Sinagra, he not only was speaking as himself for his community, he was speaking as the representative for the New York State Police Chiefs Association. And they all have endorsed this idea that, you know, they're not leaping for joy about marijuana use, but it's much more controllable, it's not an addiction-causing entryway drug. They've got studies to prove that. And as Brandy said, marijuana can be used as medicinal purpose, but also there are so many other products that can be made from hemp. This could be an absolute salvation for the agrarian community of Sullivan County. Jobs will come back, we'll have products, we'll have a product that is demanded. In California, the profits from their cannabis industry was $8 billion, eight billion. And they are now, we're told, looking for other places to grow their farms of cannabis because they have these hideous fires out there that are just wiping them out. You know, in three days, their whole crop and everything else, their business is gone. So we have a real chance here to capitalize on this, help Sullivan County residents, help Sullivan County economy, and really move forward with progress. For once, the chant of "jobs, jobs, jobs" is realized. Thank you.
Thank you, Gar. Lenny.
I'm coming into this kind of wine pool because I didn't know, or maybe I would have prepared something more. And since everybody knows I'm running for office this year, I can make an ass out of myself. But I'm against selling it in the town. I know you're, I hear, the biggest thing that bugs me is I hear everybody say, "Thank them all the taxmen." Well, it seems like, as long as we can tax it, we'll legalize it because we can make money off the taxes on it, and I don't agree with that. As far as people that smoke marijuana now, I mean, it's still legal, I guess now it's legal. And they got their own suppliers anyway, and to go into a store and be able to buy it, now you've got something that's under government control. So they're probably going to take the THC out of it so there ain't as much THC in it or whatever, so the illegal market will still be there. But I think it's a big mistake for the town to allow selling it in town. And I think you're also going to be pulling a lot of people from Pennsylvania over this way because they can't buy it over there, so they'll be coming over here to buy it. And it's a mind-altering drug. I don't care how you look at it. I smoked pot, I used to smoke it a lot, and it's a mind-altering drug. That's why a lot of people smoke it. And I think, I just think it's a mistake for the town. What do you do?
Thank you, Glenn.
Hello. I don't usually do these types of things, but I'm going to do it tonight. Okay, so hello all, I'm Jennifer Bertotto. My wife Danielle Gable and I have been residents of the Narrowsburg Flats since 2008. For those of you who don't know us, Danielle and I have had multiple businesses over the years. We started our food business, Natural Compounds, in 2001, created a farm food and lifestyle and marketing the agents, the E Troop Collective, in 2016, that we have since morphed into superfine social and online, social and digital marketing coaching program for local small businesses. We live, work, and breathe right here in Narrowsburg every single day. I decided to stand up today for multiple reasons, but mainly I felt compelled after attending the cannabis consortium held this past Saturday at the Narrowsburg Union. Big thank you to Kathy and Brendan for hosting such an event, and an even bigger thank you to David Holland and the amazing panelists for an outstanding discussion on the overall picture of cannabis legalization in New York. The history lesson alone on the prohibition of cannabis in our country and around the world was worth every second spent in Delaware Hall that night. When tonight's public hearing and vote came up in discussion during the Q and A, David Holland had said something that resonated with me, that it's been stuck in my head ever since. It was something along the lines, "If there's anyone thinking of bringing a cannabis business to this town, bring it to the board's attention." Because most of you all know, when something is a reality, the picture does seem to change. So I am here to let the cat out of the bag, that Danielle and I are in the midst of creating a cannabis research and development business plan. This is all so very new, so I'm not really comfortable discussing too many details, but we're basically doing research, having conversations with key players, and having, and we've been keeping a close watch on the industry for many years, specifically with our neighboring state of Massachusetts, to learn and understand what the industry has come to look like. I don't want to mislead anyone or make promises because we truly don't know where this will go, but as of right now, we are entertaining the various business license types, which does include a business cannabis dispensary, but also includes a new wellness website, as I've recently enrolled in becoming a cannabis health coach. So why am I telling you all this? Well, should the planets align and a physical brick-and-mortar business take fold, of course we will look at our home here in Narrowsburg first, and then work outside from there. I'm telling everybody here right now that when this begins to roll out, and the New York Cannabis Control Board is aiming to launch the program in spring, summer, 2022, so we are within months, it will happen extremely fast. And properties typically in other states have to be secured in order to submit your application. So what happens if Tustin knocks out? Anyone looking to secure a property will likely simply just go elsewhere. I know for us, petitioning the board or whatever the process is to go through, the rigmarole to have this decision reversed will not be an option. There's just not going to be any time, and honestly, not any interest in trying to reverse people's decision and change the ground of what the town votes to do. The next town over will become our focus. Any municipality that's opting in is going to have, is going to be prime for these types of businesses, and they will be the focus of most people's direction. What actually makes me sad is that while, what actually makes me sad is that there's potential loss here for the town of Tustin because of that, of receiving the 3% tax revenue. Some stats to just throw out, a dispensary can generate an average of $974 annually per square foot of dispensary space, and that's according to information gathered from the Marijuana Business Daily's 2016 Factbook. So that's some years ago. Side note, supermarkets and department stores typically get about $180 per square foot. So, I mean, there's definitely, you know, the numbers have been stated here, this is a multi-billion dollar industry we're looking at, and we are behind in New York. We are behind, and we've actually missed a lot of opportunity, but this is our opportunity to just catch right up and take the lead. So, yeah, they've coined this, the green rush for multiple reasons. And 3%, they also stated in the Factbook that, you know, at minimum dispensary, even the smallest dispensary is opening up first year with a million dollar revenue. So, you know, I could do the math, we could all do the math, 3% on even just a million dollars is $30,000 a year. I mean, you know, plenty to do, the town can do to deal with our project, you know, different projects that we have going on, our shortage of parking, I don't need to bring up all the issues, right? But this is additional revenue that we could potentially find and put to good use. So please, I ask you, dear board members, to let us get, to let go of our preconceived notions about this industry. Believe me, we've been to a lot of dispensaries in Massachusetts for research purposes only. But never have I ever felt unsafe or in an unhealthy situation. If anything, we felt a part of a thriving community that has happily accepted the new traffic and revenue. The laws around dispensaries require such security that you can't help but feel safe by every driver's license check that happens and every single door that gets swiped and held by somebody who's guarding it. They are very, it's a very friendly and happy environment. And like the Socrates Police Chief said, which I don't recall the name, but it's been said multiple times tonight, who was prerecorded that evening, the night of the consortium here this past Saturday, had done his own research and went to, traveled to Colorado, and he stated what he saw, and he spoke to people, and it showed him that there was all walks of life that were participating in this, even married couples, which I thought was cute. And it's true, there's not a specific stereotype at all. It's anyone, and actually, at times, it feels like everyone. So I ask that you each make your vote tonight, not based on what your perceptions of cannabis may have been from the first pass, but from a perspective of progress and moving forward toward a safer place for all of us. Because, believe me, I've been in this for a long time, and it hasn't been safe, and this is the opportunity to create a safe space for people, just like people that drink have a safe place to go. So, where was I? I've got to wrap this up now, I think I'm over the minutes, right? But please, I want you guys to fiscally think about this, and I understand what Glenn's saying, but at this point, not only think about it, but I think we have to have to think about seeking out these businesses. Because at this point, this could bring something amazing to our little Delaware hamlet and bring revenue of exponential potential. So I thank you all for your time and consideration, and I actually welcome any questions if anybody wants to know, and if anybody's looking to get into the industry, I really would love to have a conversation with you. So thank you all. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
I'm not a lawyer, but if I understand the way the law is structured, basically what you're considering here are lounges and dispensaries, and that is the only thing that's really on the table in the opt-out. And if that is in fact accurate, the reality is the other aspects of cultivation, growth, distribution are going to happen all around us. And right now, it's already happening, it's happening in the dark right now. There's the possibility it'll come out into the sunlight, and we'll know who's doing what. But the reality here is, it's going to be happening here all around us. All that the opt-out does is ensure that we don't get, meaning Tustin, we don't get any revenue from it. There'll be a lot of producers, a lot of people distributing, who are going to be making a boatload of money. The opt-out just ensures that we don't get any. But trust me, it's coming, it's going to be here, it's going to be all around us, it's the new agricultural wave, we can't stop it, it's in the law. All that we're considering here are the lounges and dispensaries, and that's just really a tiny part of the whole picture.
Thank you.
I too attended the consortium on Saturday, and it was, it was very interesting, and one of the best things about it was how young the crowd was. There were a lot of young farmer types, people I've never seen before. And it was interesting, I mean, because, you know, we're all at these meetings, we see the same people all the time, and this was, this was really just an exciting group. But I started looking into this issue when it was starting to be discussed, and if you look at Massachusetts, it's in cities like Lee, it's in cities, they're basically bigger than Honesdale. I think in many ways, we, we love Narrowsburg, we think it's the center of the universe, but a town of 1,800 people is probably not going to be able to sustain the kind of, this is a big business, and nothing at this meeting convinced me, because of the licensing fees, because of how many people you need to staff this place, because of the security. A friend of mine is on, is on a public works board in San Luis Obispo, California has mandated that the dumpsters alone for dispensaries cost $20,000 because they don't want people dumpster diving for, you know, whatever might get thrown away. It's a big business, and I, the way, I don't think a Kohl's distributorship would arrive in Narrowsburg because we're just, we're miles from any major highway, and, so I'm not saying negative things about your dreams, I'm all, you know, go for it, but I think in some ways, the opt-out, you're protecting us from a problem that's not going to happen. You're, and you're also protecting us from a problem that I think is not a problem in the sense that the legal, it is, the state legalized marijuana. We're not going to unlegalize it here, we could pretend, but, and it's also going to divide the town. Opting out is a divisive act. You're going to engender, you're probably going to inspire a referendum, and that's going to be a divisive thing. And I think not just voting no on opting out, you're going to, you're not, nothing's going to change, and I think you're going to avoid a divisive fight, which is essentially over, over probably nothing. And that's not to say I don't agree with everyone else who went to the consortium, and with you about, but you might also have, perversely, another element that they discussed shortly, but there's distribute, there's, and it's a big thing in California where you, you know, it's like let your fingers do the walking, you call up. So someone in liberty is going to be making a fortune, and they're going to be driving marijuana into Tustin. It's going to happen anyway. So opting out, I think, is a mistake because of, because of its divisive nature, and this, and I don't mean to be a jerk or person or whatever, you're, you're with the Volocci, you sold your business to the Volocci, whatever that is, you know, it's going to open soon, right, or whatever. So have you considered recusing yourself? Because you're literally in business with someone who's going to eventually be selling alcohol. So you're, to vote for prohibition when you're in business with someone who's in that business, to me, is it a conflict of interest? Probably legally, no, but it's a weird optics. That's just, just putting that out there. Anyway, thank you.
Yes, sir.
You should sit there, man.
My name's Sheldon, I moved up to Wyden Drive in 2019. Before that, I was a software engineer in New York City for 13 years. I worked with young-stage startups, and we had a couple of significant exits, and I decided I wanted a small town to move to. So I came up here from the city, I'm probably one of the youngest people to meeting, and I'm happy to be a young resident of this town, and I think that fresh blood is what will reengender communities that are away from major cities to have new energy. And I'm here tonight, obviously, because of the same referendum that everyone else is talking about. Everything everyone else said I agree with so far. I would just say one thing, the problem with opting out is that it tells entrepreneurs they're not welcome. Whoever is going to get this type of thing done, it's going to take millions of dollars and man-hours and just an unimaginable amount of logistics from the top to the bottom, and you're telling that person to leave town, which is essentially just a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Jacob Kelly. I've been a resident of Narrowsburg since 2016. I concur with all the, you know, points that have been made before, and I don't want to repeat them. The thing I want to say is that they're all pro, you know, sale and distribution of, you know, cannabis in our town. What are the people who are against? If there's such a huge movement against it, and if you are actually considering, you know, voting against, who are actually representing? Like, where are they? Are they here? I mean, it seems to me like you're trying to have an abortion before you had sex, and I think that's a little bit backwards. Just consider that, okay?
Yes, Brandy.
Well, I don't have a written script. I don't have to read it off. I'm going to tell you this from my heart. Ben, you remember, Al, you remember, what was Narrowsburg like when drinking age was How far did the kids come to Narrowsburg to drink? I know Ed in the back knows, everybody else is a newcomer, they weren't here. Kids drove all the way from Scranton to drink down to Siz and down to Rosemary. There was a car wreck a week going back to homeschool. You think parking on Main Street? From Siz to Cars, back all the way up on Main Street. There was no place to park when drinking age was 18. Pot's been in Narrowsburg that I know of since 1964. It's nothing new. What are you going to do with it when the kids come from Scranton? Or Wilkes-Barre, because you're close to this point. How are you going to deal with it? The other problem I have with it, start with pot, it adds on to other stuff. I lost a son to drugs. It's bullshit. This, oh my God, it's great stuff. Stick it up your nose, you know? What the hell? I don't give a rat's ass what happens in California. I live in Attala, Tustin. I'm done. This is bullshit. Don't approve it.
Ed, thank you.
My name's Ray Couse, I live in Narrowsburg, born and raised, never knew enough to leave. I'm going to second Glenn, what Glenn had to say. I second what he said.
You're all right, girl.
Do you have anybody online?
I have members online, I don't see anyone that has their hand raised.
Is there anybody else still within the audience that wants to take public comment? Oh, you're not allowed twice, but go ahead.
Just to answer the idea that the kids are going to be coming?
You've got to.
Oh, I'm sorry. But to answer the idea that it's going to attract kids, is that marijuana dispensaries are by their nature a law-abiding crowd. If you go to one in Massachusetts, it's filled with extremely middle-aged, middle-class people. It's like, it's not like a kid scene. The sheriff said that, when, the sheriff of Socrates said that, and I get sick of that. It's amazing how just, it's all walks of life, but it's, it almost struck me as like a NPR convention. It was so upscale and kind of respectable, I was shocked. I was looking for like Bill and Ted's great event, you know? It's not, it's not a stoner scene. And, you know, I respect anyone who has problems with marijuana, it is, it's not a drug to be trifled, it's not a drug to be minimalized, nor is alcohol. But it's not a stoner scene, it's not good stuff. This is, it's like, it's, if you go to a dispensary, you want to obey the law. Because you can get it, I'm sorry, if you go to a dispensary, you, you want to obey the law.
Yeah, this is your microphone.
I'm sorry. I'm done, all right?
Thank you, Kevin. All right, we have one online, Lisa DeAndrea.
Lisa, you are on.
Hi. So I understand that there's a lot of people that are for it, and they keep saying, I keep hearing, "It's the law, it's the law, it's the law." Correct, it is the law in New York State. However, I think everybody is losing sight of the fact that marijuana is still a Schedule I controlled substance. So while it is the law in New York State, it is still technically illegal on the federal level to sell, distribute, or dispense marijuana. The money generated from the marijuana sales are illegal proceeds. Anybody dealing with the money generated from the proceeds of the marijuana sales in the state of New York could technically be violating the money laundering laws. There is a provision within the Federal Controlled Substances Act that prohibits an individual from... from renting property for the purposes of illegal drug activity. A marijuana dispensary technically would be an illegal drug activity. So I think everybody is looking at this as, well, it's the law in New York State, and it is, but it's not the law federally. You're still committing a federal offense with this, you still have the potential for money laundering, you still have the potential for other CSA violations. And I think that as a town, we should really think long and hard about whether or not we want to have this happen and have this type of activity engaging, you know, happening within our town. Not to mention the fact that most of these dispensaries are cash businesses. Nationally, chartered banks aren't going to bank an individual that owns a dispensary. So I would be, again, I think the town needs to think long and hard, yes, there is a potential for a 3% tax revenue, but we might be thinking, we might be short-sighted in our thinking, and, you know, dangling that 3% in front of you, yes, you can get that revenue, but what problems are you also inviting as a result of those problems? So I just urge the board to, you know, really consider all of the factors, not just the tax revenue, in addition to marijuana is and has always been a gateway drug. So do we want that sort of element, do we want that in our town? You know, just, that's my, I would just ask the board to really consider all factors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two quick things.
They can't hear you, you got to come up.
Two quick things. One, it is not considered, well, part eight, it is not, it is not considered the gateway drug. What transpired in 1936 was William Randolph Hearst and the newspapers were very concerned about the great loss of money, and, because they were backing jute, which was being grown, and if hemp was grown, that would curtail their businesses, and it would be a tremendous hit. And so they came up with, what could they do to stop it? J.P. Morgan, financier, put his more than two cents in, lots of money, and said, we're going to create something that will be a fear-mongering program position, and that has lasted for the last 90 years. It is not what it is. That was done specifically to put the kibosh on it so that they could profit with, from jute, which is what they were using for paper, for newspapers, and so that was something that was very specifically designed for that. The other thing is, point two, I believe it is 38 states that have legally accepted cannabis and hemp, and it is going into Congress to change the federal law. So even what Lisa said is true at this moment, it is not something that looks like is going to be valid for very long. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment before I close the public comment? Is Lisa still back?
I have her on the resume.
Okay. Lisa, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to address one thing. You're right, there are bills before Congress in order to legalize marijuana and to remove it from Controlled Substances Act. Hemp is federally legal, so there is no issue with hemp. I wasn't speaking about hemp. I'm speaking mostly about marijuana, cannabis, whatever you want to, however you want to refer to it. While it is true that those are pending before Congress, why not opt out of this, and when it becomes legal federally, when it becomes something that is nationally permitted and that these dispensaries can be banked properly with national banks and not mainly cash businesses, why not wait as a town and see that? Or why not wait and see how and what effect it has on rural communities? Yes, there are dispensaries in California, there are dispensaries in Massachusetts, however, they're in urban areas. We are a rural community. If you have a lounge, somebody is smoking in that lounge and then getting into their vehicle, driving home. The same thing, if somebody is purchasing marijuana from, from just a dispensary, not a lounge, they're getting their marijuana, going into their car, what's to say they're not going to smoke and drive? So I, I think the town really needs to consider all of the factors and look and see, you know, maybe just wait a little bit. So opt out now, and we have the option later to opt in to the program. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not going to get into a discussion. It's a public comment. We're not going to go back and forth. That's why I said one time in the beginning, Brian is next. You don't have to agree with what people say, it's public comment so that they can give it to the board. It's up to the board to know the facts about certain things before we get going. So we're not going to get into, this is not going to get into a two-hour back and forth, he said, she said.
My apologies, Ben.
You're fine. I wasn't, that's, you were fine. I got one other person that wants to have their first attempt. Brian, is the one?
Hey, so yeah, I missed the beginning of this, so I'm hopefully not, I'm getting too far off topic. You know, I think that this has been a long time coming, so as, you know, I'm a Canadian citizen, though recently became an American citizen as well. You know, marijuana's been fully legalized in Canada now, and it's happening all over in my hometown, you know, big cities, small cities, all over, and, you know, there's been, you know, no, no real shift, right? Like, for us to believe that, like, legal versus, you know, illegal is actually going to change the population that is using marijuana right now, you know, alcohol's out there as an option, we have lots of alcohol establishments in town, it just seems like we are, we are singling ourselves out as, you know, a community that is not going along with what the state is doing, what the, what other communities, what other countries are doing, and, and I have yet to be, you know, receive any scientific analysis, articles, or case that actually says, you know, that there is a, that is a reason to opt out, like, that makes a case against it. There's a lot of rumors, et cetera, and people's opinions, which I respect, everyone's entitled their opinions, but we are not going, but when it becomes legal in New York, you're not going to see, like, billions of people all of a sudden start using weed that didn't before. They're all using it now, it's just happening illicitly, under the market, in, you know, if people are growing up here, I'm sure, and have been for years, right? The reality is here, we should just be part of the community and not single ourselves out as someone who's going to not go along with what our state and what the vast majority of the population is doing.
Yeah, I'll move it to you. Thank you. Any other public comment from the floor?
I'll try to take it down.
Sure, why not? We'll, we'll throw everything to the wind.
Well, you started it right, you got it. I just want to add a couple, I just looked it up, I believe it's 19 states that have gone recreational, and 36 medical, and the issue with the federal government is definitely an issue, but that's why we have state rights, right? So that, I think there's a reason for that. So let's not forget about the states' rights to create their own programs and their own laws, that we'll have to see and watch the federal government move on this. But there are a limited amount of licenses, it's going to happen fast, I've watched it in other states, it goes like this, so we're either going to be in or we're going to be out. And it's fine, whatever the decision is, is going to be what it is, but waiting and opting in later, you're going to be behind the time, you will have missed the opportunity, and like the gentleman in the back said, you're discouraging entrepreneurs that are trying to bring business to Sullivan County, that are trying to bring it to here. So yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Before we close the public hearing? Anybody online?
Nobody that I'm seeing online.
At this point, I make a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor? I oppose.